Ready? Okay. I'll call this meeting to order for Monday, December 10th, Bennington Select Board. First item on the agenda is the Pledge Allegiance. Jason, would you lead us in that tonight?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my name under God, and to the faithful who look to thee in justice and pardon.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Sharon Brush and the Vice Chair of the Select Board. Joe Krasik, our Chair, could not be with us tonight, so I will be presiding over the meeting. First item on the agenda are the minutes from November 26th. Does anyone have any questions or corrections, additions? If not, I will move they be accepted.
Move to accept. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Chairman, moving to abstain.
Okay. All those in favor of the minutes, please raise your hand. Five, five of us, five and a...
Five and abstention.
And abstention. Next item is the warrants. Does anyone have any questions on the warrants that we have in our packet? Chris, anything?
No, ma'am.
I have none.
Jason?
No.
I have one, Stuart, just out of curiosity. We have on page three, a color photometer. Just wondering, who uses a color photometer? Is that water treatment?
In fact, you're right, yes. That is the water treatment.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. And just on the bottom of the first page, Stu, that chombers in Quebec, I'm assuming that's wastewater?
You are correct, it is well.
Okay. That's all I have. Next item, are there any citizens in the audience this evening that want to address something that is not on our agenda this evening? Okay. You need to come up, at least stand by the microphone and state your name.
My name is Jennifer Krynen.
Okay.
And my husband Johannes and I own the bakery on the east end of Main Street, Bakari Krynen.
Okay.
I'm a Bennington native. I was born at Putnam Memorial Hospital way back in 1967. And probably the day I turned 18, Timmy Corcoran showed up at my apartment above the Hart Theater to register me to vote.
That doesn't sound like Tim at all.
No, it doesn't. So, the reason I'm here tonight is because we used to have four parking spaces in front of our bakery on Main Street, and they mysteriously disappeared last Tuesday to our surprise. My husband was at the bakery when the parking spaces were removed, and he called RJ Dolly after the fellows that were doing the work told him that he was the one that ordered it.
Okay.
I went to the town office later that day and talked to both RJ and Stu. And then I went home and looked back at emails that I had from when the parking stalls were originally put in, or just before. And that was when Pat Kinney was still the town highway supervisor.
Mm-hmm.
And I figured out that apparently Pat hadn't gone through the proper channels in the first place when they were put in.
So, were they there when you first...
When we bought the building, they were not there.
Okay.
But prior to buying the building, we spoke with both Dan Monks and Larry McLeod at the business location, who assured us that parking was perfectly legal on both sides of the street, as it wasn't posted a no parking zone. But since then, and since this incident, Stu has sent me an email that said that parking is legal on the street until it is posted a no parking zone, which may or may not happen, depending on how all of this transpires. And then, looking at the email that was forwarded to me from the State Transportation, whatever the proper title is, I'm not certain of, but the State Transportation Department, actually stated in their email that the cars were parked illegally. So, I'd like some clarification for that, whether it is in fact legal or not legal, because our customers are certainly confused about it now.
Okay. But do you have a couple of parking spaces at the end of your building, where the door is located?
We do, but I've been told since this happened that it's also illegal for people to pull out of there.
Okay.
Unless there are no other cars there, it's impossible to turn around and go out facing forward in a vehicle. If there are no other cars there, someone could do a three-point turn to exit the parking area, but if there are one or two other cars there, it's impossible...
Okay.
...unless they backed into it.
So, Stuart, this is state highway, correct?
Well, it's a Class 1 town highway. It doesn't become state highway until you get outside the former village limits. But under the law, Class 1 town highways have concurrent authority resting with the town and the state. So, we can't do something that the state does not approve of. And apparently, and I go back to Pat putting the parking spaces in, I understand now that there was a conversation held between Pat and some of the members of the District Engineers' Office that indicated that parking probably could be allowed there because the paved width is wide enough. When I first talked with Jennifer, we didn't know whether it was wide enough or not. The state was taken in a position that center line prohibited parking on that side of the road, because in order to buy the cars that were parked there, you had to cross the center line, which puts you in the path of oncoming traffic. A dangerous situation.
Okay.
A liable situation, if not corrected, which is why RJ went up and had the spaces painted out.
Okay.
Because we didn't want to face that issue. Following that, after talking with Jennifer, RJ did go up and measure. We believe the road is wide enough, and actually, folks at the District Engineers' Office have now concurred that it is wide enough. There was apparently a movement in place historically to relocate that center line, but the last time it was painted, that center line was not relocated. So, we have a situation where what Pat Kinney did on behalf of the town may have been in line with the plan, but unfortunately, when the line was last striped by the state, and they stripe all Class 1 highways, the folks who came down from their facilities, not local, but statewide, followed the old line. So, we've got a situation where we have a conflict. We have a center line that makes parking there not illegal, but certainly dangerous because people have to cross the center line. We don't restrict parking there, but we certainly can encourage it in order to avoid that liability. So, we now are in a situation where the District Engineer folks agree with us on our measurements. They're designing the appropriate location of the center line so that parking can be reinstalled, the spaces can be reinstalled in front of the bakery. And weather permitting, we're going to have to do the work, because it's a Class 1 town highway. It's within the town limits. So, we'll have to grind out the center line, realign the center line. It'll take about 300 feet of center line to redesign it so that it flows smoothly.
Okay.
But it can be done. We're working to try to bring those spaces back, but until we have a design and we can install that design so that it meets with state approval theoretically under the law, we can't do it.
But if somebody parks in front of their business, they're not going to get a ticket to park there.
They're not going to get a ticket. But, I mean, from the liability perspective, I have to tell you that if we don't prohibit parking there, we're taking on some liability here, but I'm not suggesting that we do that. By the time we pass an ordinance and the 60-day appeal period, if we can't do it with our own crews within, before the winter really strikes, we'd be able to do it at the far end of winter, and it wouldn't make sense to adopt an ordinance now.
I mean, there's a lot of streets in town that don't have a parking space delineated by a white line.
No. You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. And from what I understand, people are continuing to do business there, they're continuing to park there.
Yes, but they're definitely confused about whether or not they should be.
Well, I can understand their confusion.
But they could legally park on either side of the road, going in either direction. Is that correct? Or is it too narrow on the other side?
Technically, no.
Well...
But we're not going to enforce it. We're not going to enforce it. But under the concurrent authority, the state has not given us permission to do that. And therefore, technically under the law, it's illegal. But the state's not going to bring an action against the town as long as we're working cooperatively with them to correct the situation, and that's what we're attempting to do.
But if the DMV guy comes by in his truck and sees somebody park there...
No, he's not going to write a ticket.
He's not going to write a ticket. Okay.
Stuart, as part of the realignment, does the other side of the street then become restricted, no parking?
It will be, yes.
Allow for the room on the other side?
Yes, it will have to be.
On Jennifer's side.
I don't think anybody parks really on that side of the street.
The owners of the property on that side do.
Just the owners of the property.
But they have a driveway.
They have a whole yard they can park in, but they choose to park on the street, mostly.
Okay.
But that's going to be part of the process. We would have to, because what's going to happen is that lane's going to have to be reduced to two to three feet. That is the, call it the bike lane, or whatever, will have to be reduced in order to accommodate increased width on the other side of the road.
Okay. So, are you happy with that? I mean, it's going to happen.
I understand.
Time frame?
I don't have a timeframe.
And that's where I take issue with it. This happened three weeks before Christmas. It's our busiest time of year. Like I said, I'm a Bennington native. I moved away for the whole decade of the '90s, and when my husband and I moved back here, we brought back with us about $100,000 to invest in this community. And since then, we've easily invested another $100,000 to $150,000 of our own money in establishing this business for a second time now. And it hasn't been easy. I've had health issues, and we've had to recover from that, and it's been very challenging on many levels, and this just seems like a slap in the face, and a "we don't want you here" kind of tactic to me. Anybody who took the time to sit and watch the vehicles go by our place when there are parked cars there, I don't know, they'd have to be blind not to see that it actually enhances safety rather than impairs it, because it made the cars slow down in an area where they're typically speeding through, because there are no other traffic lights or any other means of slowing them down. It's a street probably a mile from Henry's Market to the new bypass light, I don't know, maybe a little less, but people tend to speed through there.
And we certainly appreciate your diligences to keeping your business here in town. That's, you know, you're an asset to the community, that's for sure. And we, I mean, we are working on the problem. Customers can still park there. You know, we're not going to sit there with a parking ticket in our hand to...
And I've offered to pay any that incur one.
I don't think that's going to happen.
I don't want to take the whole evening, but there's one other thing I'd like to add, and that is the gross miscommunication, or lack of communication at all. My understanding is that there was an email back in August of 2011, and there may possibly have been another this past August. I haven't seen that one, but I did see the one from August 2011. And it's been implied that it was to our benefit, that that was ignored by town officials. And to that, I would say that had it been addressed at that time, this all would have been resolved by now, and we wouldn't be having this issue at our busiest time of year.
Unfortunately, we're not privileged to those. We don't get all the emails that come into the town.
I understand that. And being married to a Dutchman for 23 years, whose second language is English, I completely understand how miscommunication can happen, but a total lack of communication is another matter altogether.
Okay. Are there any other...
I think the issue here, looking back, hindsight's a wonderful thing. On August 28th, Tropical Storm Irene hit the community. And whatever we intended to do, or didn't intend to do based on those emails, got lost in a shovel for everyone, including the state of Vermont. So, yes. Did they benefit? Did the spaces remain? Yes. Would it have been great if we communicated that we have an issue there? Yes. But things happen, and we had other issues to worry about within the next two weeks of that email, three weeks.
Okay. Do the board members have any comments?
So, just to clear it up, what has to happen to get a timeframe for this to be completed? What are we waiting on from the state?
We're waiting on the state to do a design. The District Engineers' Office has sent a project north. When that design comes back, if it comes back relatively quickly, then we'll have to gauge what we can accomplish, given the weather that we're facing. So far, so good. If this kind of temperature remains, and we're not into the dead of winter, we might be able to address the issue, but I can't promise that, because I don't know what's going to happen weather-wise. And I don't know how long it's going to take to get the design back to us.
Okay.
Can I ask if it's also true that the town doesn't have the equipment to grind down the yellow line?
Actually, that's not true. The state doesn't have the equipment. We do.
I misunderstood RJ on that, then. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other citizens out there that would like to bring something before the board that's not on our agenda? Marie?
I think I'd like to reiterate the challenge with the state in the communication with the town. I understand that you don't get all of the emails that come into the town, but there was such an email that actually, I understand Irene, I understand the issues that we've had before us as a town in fixing, but there was also an email that went out this past August, a year after Irene. I know we're still in recovery and doing, but, and I'm happy that you sent someone back out to re-measure the line, because the state has already done that and had already defined what some of the issues could be to fix it. I'm sorry to see that a business of any size or kind would have to go through this because of lack of communication, or at least given a timeline, that they could have, we could have possibly worked it out. And where the state this past year has been finishing the bypass up in that very section, you know, this has been deemed a challenge for over a year of the safety issue. And so, I guess for a year, it wasn't that big of an issue. And then there's, as I said, another email that came out in August that was disregarded, and now we're at this point. It's not probably the very best way for a small business and folks that have invested their life savings into wanting to continue in this community and thrive. It is a challenge from the Burgess Side Street, the Burgess Road side, because cars going down as fast as they do there. It is also, I believe my understanding, illegal to pull out of that parking lot, and actually a bigger safety hazard than what you had on the road. So, I hope there is a way that this can be resolved, that it's now before you. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Stuart, is there any way to reinstate the parking, where we have the state hash out a design?
I would say no, simply because we have been informed by the state of Vermont that it is a liability and a danger. And I will not ask my staff to put lines back on the street that create a liability and a danger. I'm not suggesting that we prohibit parking there, which would be the next logical step, because I think we can work this thing out, we can get that design in hand as quickly as possible. But I would not ask my staff to re-stripe the street.
So, when they requested for the, the state requested for the parking spaces to be eliminated, I did read that you were concerned as whether or not that meant a formal request. Is that, did they meet the formal request process in your mind, or...
Well, it was not an order.
Okay.
I think that's the issue. If the state orders it, then it becomes an issue of prosecution, and the state's attorney's office gets involved. This was not an order. I don't think it rose to that level.
What has to happen for that to be an order? Do you know?
I would prefer not to find out, Justin.
Shouldn't I ask the question, that's all?
Well, I think if we continue the process, we put them back in, we fly in the face of what an engineer of the state of Vermont has pointed out to us, I think that starts to get the town and the state working against one another.
I understand that. I was going to ask, what constitutes an order?
Well, an order would come from the, probably from the Secretary of Transportation to the town to immediately take an action, or within a reasonable timeframe. We're not at that point, and I don't seek to get there. We have a great working relationship with the District Engineers' Office here. The gentleman that pointed out the deficiency was not with the District Engineers' Office here. He was a Montpelier employee, but in truth, he was correct. Those parking spaces do force people to cross the center line, to get around cars that are parked there. And I'm not aware of a secondary email in August of 2012, but then I haven't looked carefully for all of the emails involved in this situation, so...
So, it will be remedied. We just have to wait?
We're going to have to wait for that design to come down to us, and I'm assuming that we're not going to have an objection to the design if it satisfies the problem.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
But it is a concurrent authority.
Okay.
I stress that.
Is there anyone else that would like to bring something before the board?
Yeah, I'm here for two reasons. One, to back Jennifer and Hans. I think this was handled terribly, and I am amazed that one bakery can get all of the accolades, and another bakery in town cannot even get the respect to give them a phone call to say we have a problem with your parking. But having said that, are you having to remedy this, right? This is going to be fixed, so they have more parking there, or back to what it was?
Yes, we are.
In some kind of a timely manner, or is it going to take another year to do this?
Mike, we just had this discussion with the board, with these people...
I'm sorry, I'm asking. I was five minutes late. It's raining out. Can I have a simple answer? Are we going to do it, less than a year for them, or are we going to wait a year and find out we can't do it?
We're going to do it as soon as practical.
And roughly, what timeline is that?
I don't have a timeline.
You have no timeline, where you can fix this?
None whatsoever, Mike. It lies on the state of Vermont to give us a design that meets their requirements.
And the state did not order you to do this, did not order the town to take those parking spaces. They did not.
They did not.
So, we just did that as a town on our own?
That's right, because it created a liability for the town.
And it always was a liability then, since there was a smokehouse up there and everything else, correct?
That's apparently true, yes. As long as the center line was in that location.
And is the center line something we move, or the state moves?
Mike, it's not...
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
Excuse me. It's not an interrogation.
It is. I'm asking questions. I'm a citizen.
I'm feeling interrogated.
She isn't feeling interrogated.
Okay.
May I just point something out?
Yes, you may.
I think, if I heard it right, when the people who owned the bakery came in, they came to the town, they were advised that it was okay to put parking in, and then we put parking in there. I don't, just to say, going back, IGA is before my time. William Smokehouse, I can barely remember, but to keep the record straight, I don't think those spaces were there at the time Mike's referring to, if I followed the conversation correctly. I'm getting it now. I'm under that...
I think people may have parked there, but there were no delineated lined parking spaces.
The parking space is delineated, didn't exist for the time period that Mike's saying. If I heard it right, I obviously don't...
Well, then it raises another question. Who put those lines up there?
You weren't here for that. The town did.
The town did.
Yes. And this was under the previous highway superintendent. But I understand now that he had a conversation with the District Engineers' Office that indicated that the road might be wide enough, and we were hoping at that time, apparently, to redirect the center line when they did some paving up through there, but that unfortunately, the lines were striped for parking, the center line didn't move. So, the issue is, we need to relocate the center line, Mike, and we need to do that in a design that is concurrently approved by the town and the state.
Well, I hope we're doing it in a timely manner. The other thing I'm here for is to make a request to the select board. Our petition is an advisory petition, and I'd like to know if the select board would put it on the March ballot. It's the question, "Shall the voters of Bennington encourage the select board to change zoning use of Johnson Control property from industrial to commercial?" It is just advisory. It's not asking for any money. It's just, it's an election year, and we've got money issues that are going to face the town, budget, you know, costs are going to go up, school budget, everything else. And I just think it would be nice to see if the select board would like to get the opinion of the people on the Johnson Control issue. Three of you folks are up for reelection, and I should think you would want to know and want to be able to ask the people what they feel on the issue.
How many people do you have on that petition?
I don't have any signatures at this time. I'd like the select board to put it on as an advisory question. It's, no money's being asked. We're not setting the precedent here. It's an issue that's been debated for at least five years, and the board has gone back and forth, one board for it, another board against it. There was a very good proposal by Dan Monks to change the whole zoning to a mixed use, which I think would have been quite a plus for North Side Drive. It might have given some stimulus for the town and the state to look at that North Side Drive and fix it up, so Bennington can start to utilize that space, all of it, to the best of our ability. As you all know, and you're going to be facing the budget things this year, we've got some major issues facing this town that we have to fix, and I would like very much to see what the people feel on Johnson Control.
Well, I'm also, get the cat out of the bag here. I'll come out and support it. I was the only one on the board that...
The cat was never in the bag.
...when it came up. So, I mean, I would be very interested in seeing how the people would weigh in on that. But I would vote for putting it on the ballot if so pleases the board to put it on there.
Stu, can we do that without having an actual petition?
Yes, you can.
You can, thank you.
Yeah, we can.
We've done that in the past.
Let me point out, as Mike just said, as I think everybody, at least at this table, would acknowledge, most people watching tonight who follow the debate for the last five and a half years plus would probably acknowledge, this has been vetted time and time and time and time again. This board, after vetting it the last time for a period of about a year and a half between debating it, creating a commission, charging the commission, having the commission come back, having some public hearings on it, going through everything that we need to go through to do that, came up with a nearly unanimous decision to keep it industrial, but did create a policy that time that said, and Mike, just for the record, I would be, if the owner would simply tell us what he had in mind on that parcel, I would give it a completely fair hearing. This board came up with a very good policy, in my opinion, that said, "We're going to keep it industrial, protect that base, but we will entertain any plan proposed that is a non-conforming use to that zoning designation." It passed six to one. I think, you know, I will add this, regardless of who is running or when they're running, since that was just made a point by Mr. Bethel, of three people will have terms expire this year, and shouldn't the people know where people stand on this, whether you're for it, against it, have changed your mind on it, think it could be any combination thereof? If anybody's followed that debate at all, I don't think there's any secret than of where anybody on this current board, or any former board, stands on that subject, because it is without a doubt a true statement in the last six years, other than the annual budget. That has been the topic that has been most publicly discussed, most often, by the Bennington Select Board.
You're exactly right on that.
So, then may I say, is there a fear that you don't, you do not want to know?
Oh, Mike.
No, there's no fear.
You don't, I'm not going to jump to the bait of a question.
Well, I'm asking the question. Then why don't you put it up to the front of the people?
Because it's been in front of the people.
No, it has not been the vote of the people.
That's why we have public hearings.
It's been public hearings, and it has been not of great interest, as I've seen from attendance and discussion. I mean, the few people that I've talked to that had a specific interest in the property have been few. I don't see it as a giant town-wide issue.
So, can you take a vote to turn down my request, then, or what do you have to do?
Somebody would have to make a motion.
I'll make the motion to support it. You know, it's no secret that I think that's probably one of the largest mistakes this board's made in recent history. I feel that. I still feel that way. I suspect if it went to an advisory vote, it probably passed two or three to one. But I'm curious to see whether or not it was. So, I'll make the motion that we put this on the ballot.
As an advisory?
As an advisory question, yeah.
Is there a second?
As long as it's advisory, I have no problem with that, so I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I think it's been an advisory question, a de facto advisory question for the last six years. I think it's a waste of time. We just adopted the policy after a year and a half of debate. Let's see if the policy works. Let's see if the owner will provide us with any thoughts on how he plans to develop the property. That was the overriding concern of both this board, almost unanimously, almost, I want to say unanimously, of the planning commission, and I think unanimously of the full-time town government, full-time employees. So I cannot articulate any other topic that has been more vetted than that. This has been a project of Mr. Bethel, canceling his supporters over the last six years to make this a constant issue. We've debated it. We've made a board decision on it, and I don't think it's worth being an advisory question.
Okay. We do have a motion on the floor.
I just add that, you know, I know what Jason's comes from, and you know, you're absolutely entitled to your opinion. We've discussed it numerous times.
I think we've all discussed it numerous times.
We have had, you know, the last two select boards come to two different conclusions on this. This board reached one, and the previous board reached another.
Well, the previous board came to an agreement to explore the, what was involved. I don't think there was any stretch that they approved rezoning, and then the recommendation of the planning.
I highly suspect that that board would remain in place, they would have concluded.
Well, this even goes on beyond the two boards.
Sure.
I think the last 10 years is a discussion.
Yeah, it's done back a long time.
I voted for just what Jason was speaking of, and I have absolutely no problem, and I'm very comfortable with that. But as long as this is advisory and we want to get the input, I don't think we've actually done that, and I have no problem with that. This is not, we wouldn't be setting policy. We would be hearing what the voters have to say, and I think that as public officials, that's our job, so I have no problem with that.
Any further comments? All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you for your consideration.
Can I, for that topic, jump back to the last thing we were on for a second, just ask them a question on there?
Sure.
Stuart, do we have any capability of looking into the engineering of that ourselves and then presenting it to the state as a way to expedite this process?
I think, do we have the capability? We probably do.
I'm just curious if that could get it done quicker for these people.
Well, I think, I think that if the weather holds, I think, I think this will move along fairly quickly, and we'll continue to advocate for it to move along quickly. But I don't have an engineer on my staff, and I would prefer not to go out and spend the money to hire an engineer if the state's going to do that for us.
Okay.
That's all I have for that question.
All right. Okay. I'm afraid to ask if there's any other citizens. Next item on the agenda is Aldrich and Elliott wastewater upgrade.
Good evening.
Hi, Terry.
Folks know who I am. Folks at home may not know, Terry Martsch, I'm the Water Resources Superintendent. As part of our state permit to operate, our plant, as we docked in our budget section, is approaching 28 years old, and as part of our permit to operate, we're required to do a preliminary engineering study sometime before the permit is out, and I believe it's up for renewal right now. So a year ago, we budgeted in, for fiscal year 12, to do the study. We went through a fairly lengthy, lengthy process to select an engineer. We selected Aldrich and Elliott to come in and do this study. They were moved in, and then we did interviews. So what we wanted to do here tonight, we had this kind of sitting on the back burner since late spring or early summer, mostly due to the fact that I've been really tied up with Irene thing on the water side. And so we finally got this thing kind of buttoned down and wanted to make presentation you folks, like, you know, what we looked at, what we come back with, and then I think we need to talk to you folks where we, how we move forward on this, right? With you tonight, I have Wayne Elliott from Aldrich and Elliott, and also have two of the people from our staff, George White, who's our chief operator, Will Tiffany, who's our lab technician. Miguel also looks over our permitting, really keeps it up to date with all the new regulations and how's it relate to our discharge permit and that kind of thing. So these were all folks that were involved in the, in the upgrade or the preliminary engineering process, along with Stuart at times, right? So really what Wayne wants to accomplish here is...
Okay. Just for TV, do you want the lights off?
No, it's fine, thank you.
You sure they can see it okay, huh? Okay.
Again, good evening. My name's Wayne Elliott. I'm the vice president with Aldrich and Elliott. Worked on your wastewater system going back to about 2004. This is the document that Terry just referenced, so we're going to try to do a brief summary, synopsis, so this is about 12 months' worth of work here in about 20 minutes tonight. So one of the things I would really stress, and if you have any questions, or you have any...
Sure.
If you have any questions or comments as we're going through, feel free to jump in. I'd rather have some dialogue or discussion as we're going versus you guys listening to me for the next 20 minutes or so and wrapping up at the end, so again, please jump in. This process started back in 2008, as Terry mentioned. As part of the state discharge permit, there's a requirement that the facility, once it gets to be about 20 years, that an engineer come in and do an evaluation. That is a discharge permit requirement, and as part of that, we have recommendations for the upgrade of your sewer lines, manholes, the pump station, and the wastewater treatment facility. The town has always been very aggressive, proactive about putting money aside in the wastewater budget and the capital budget, so staff has been very good about maintaining manholes, rehabbing sewer lines, replacing equipment at the wastewater plant. And as we're going to go through this, it's probably a sticker shock piece of it, but honestly, that's paid dividends because you have reinvested in the facility over the years. One of the recommendations out of this 20-year evaluation for future planning was in about 2011 is to perform this preliminary engineering study, so this is the document that we started here back in, back in 2010. The objectives of the preliminary engineering study, the town wanted a reasonable, cost-effective improvements. We also wanted to verify the permitted capacity of 5.1 NGD was adequate to meet your future growth needs, want to ensure that there wasn't also an expansion of the facility required. You have used rotating biological contact or technology for the biological treatment. We wanted to make sure that that was cost-effective to upgrade, and there wasn't a newer, better technology out there. We also wanted to make sure we could continue to provide reliable operation for the next 20-plus years. You just had to renew all your discharge permit back in November 2011, and we also wanted to determine if there were any short-term changes in the, in the new permit that were going to dictate how we looked at the upgrade and some of the deficiencies. And the last one is that the watering equipment was in good condition because it was completely replaced when you had the fire back in early 2000s, so we knew that that wasn't going to require any repairs. As Terry said, the town went through a solicitation process, interview process within our engineers, and we were selected, and we started the study, and generally the scope of the work here, the first one was assess both the sewer collection system, pump stations, and wastewater treatment facility, provide recommendations, continuation of the 20-year evaluation. They also wanted to upgrade some alternatives for some of the deficiencies, which I'll talk about briefly, evaluate existing conditions for compliant with new code requirements, perform an assessment of mechanical and electrical existing conditions, and then prepare preliminary cost estimates to be used for the basis of funding. Basically, your wastewater facilities consist of the sewer collection system, the pump stations, and wastewater treatment, and I'll talk briefly about each of those. As I mentioned, the town's been very proactive about continuing to work in the sewer collection system. You have many miles of sewer line out there. You have old ashrobed clay lines that date back to the early 1900s, so that takes significant maintenance and effort from the staff. Back in 2004, there was started what we call a Phase 1 sewer system evaluation. That included manhole inspections. There was a lot of flow metering, primarily the interceptor sewer, to see where the extraneous excessive flow comes from. When it rains, you have wet weather conditions, your flows at the wastewater plant go up pretty significantly, so we wanted to explore and try to identify where that's coming from. As it says up here, we, we found out that about two-thirds of that flow comes to the main interceptor sewer, which runs kind of from the village area out towards that north Bennington to the wastewater plant. So as a continuation of that in 2006, we got into the Phase 2. That included doing a complete sewer system mapping of the sewer collection system, so that's all electronically, it's on orthophobos, and now it's been transferred into GIS. Again, additional flow metering at the interceptor sewer, so we could better narrow down the specific segments of where the flow was coming in, and then the town continued with that on their own and televised many of these sewer lines from September 2007 to January of 2008. The town has five wastewater pump stations, and those are a little different in your system, especially with the size of your sewer collection system. Many communities your size would have 10, 15, 20 pump stations. You only have five, which is good, and in almost all cases, they serve very small service areas, they're really pretty minor, pretty minor in the sewer collection system. So in most cases, the majority of the flow in the collection system is going by gravity to the, to the wastewater plant. Some of the timelines with the wastewater plant, the original facility was back in the, built back in the 1960s, and at that point, you only had primary treatment. You know, then in the, in the 70s with the Clean Water Act, many of these facilities were required to operate by the federal government to a secondary degree of treatment, so that was done in 85. So the majority of what you have done at the plant was done, was upgraded and built back in 1985, so now again, back to the issue originally, that's designed for 20-year life, you know, and that's going to be 27, 28 years old. The compost facility was constructed in 1990, and then in 2004, because of the fire, that entire facility and the dewatering operation was rebuilt. Give you an idea of the treatment plant, just very briefly, if you've been there at the plant, you've got to come in from this direction, from the east, drive down the access road, the control building sits right here. The flow comes in by gravity through a 36-inch pipeline into what we call the headworks and the affluent pump station, and that is lifted in a 30-inch pipeline up to the primary clarifiers, continues down to the west-early side of the site where it goes through the rotating biological contact, which is the biological treatment, continues back in the east, goes through the secondary clarifiers, goes through an effluent filter through the chlorination facility where it's disinfected and metered, and then it goes in a 36-inch pipeline to treat it effluent out to the Loomsack River. This is an example up here of all we did through the preliminary engineering study and really focusing on the treatment plant itself as we went through each of the process elements. And what we're trying to do here is list each of the various items on the left. This is really just an example. We're trying to rank one through five, one being poor, five good, really what the condition of that existing equipment or building or tank or structure is. We've also identified the year installed, and the other thing we're trying to do here too is really predict what the remaining life of the item is. As an example here, let's see, something...
I have a question about that.
Sure.
I'm assuming for purposes of this presentation, you've got an array of experience over several municipal wastewater...
Fifty of these over a few years ago.
You've done fifty.
Yep.
You know, in this presentation, we've got some commentary that says work that was done approximately 27 years ago had a 20-year expected life, which seems light, I'm not an engineer, but would seem light to me for, for work that's being put into the ground and been pulled out after 20 years. But in your experience, over 50 different sewer systems, how long does similarly situated and built equipment typically last?
There's...
And have you seen failures?
Yes, absolutely. Different degrees here. Maybe it's important for me to back up. If you're looking at the concrete structures or what's in the ground, that's typically good for a 50-year life. In fact, you've got a couple of structures in the plant, again, that date back to the 1960s. Again, buildings obviously have more than 20-year life, you know? They may need some work on the roof, roof replacement in 25 years. What I'm talking about the 20-year kind of cutoff, that's really the equipment, the pumps, the electrical systems, the motor control centers, the controls. And generally, over the years, I've done a 20, many of these 20-year evaluations, and honestly, at the 20th year, it's not going to quit on you. If it's been well-maintained, we typically see at least 25 years, and we can see almost 30 years. It's interesting, though, if you go into that plant in 25 years, and you go back in at four or five years later, you see a very, very quick deterioration. It's like that car that's got, you know, 150, 175,000 miles on it, you know? You keep it going, replace the tires, you know, you replace the oil, and you just start at some point, you just start to see a very quick deterioration of the equipment. And the issue the operators get into is if you've got a pump goes down, you know, in some cases, you can't get parts anymore, you can't get spare parts, you've got backup equipment. Now, do you really want to put money, you're sticking money in something that's now 25, 30 years old, that's really reached, and you've got its useful, useful life out of it, so.
Thank you.
That gets your question, Jason.
Thank you.
But this is generally the process of what we're trying to do, and then the extension out of this as we go on is what we did, is we looked at, you know, what are the items that we really need to deal with over the next five years? What are the items that we need to deal with in the next five to 10 years, and then we go out 10-plus years? And this is the rationale or basis here, really, where we're looking to come up, come up with the priorities. Very quickly on the deficiencies, again, I can't stress enough that the town has been very good about replacing equipment out there, and because of that, this is really, you're in better shape than you really could be. And some examples of a couple of other large facilities in Vermont that have been upgraded and currently being upgraded over the last three, four years of about the same age, there was limited maintenance and repairs, and those facilities are looking at a $25 or $30, $30, $25 or $30 price tag versus what we're looking here. So by putting that money aside in your capital budget and the wastewater funds, the staff has been very good about replacing a pump and doing what they could here to keep things up and running and viable. The headworks is really where the preliminary treatment happens, so that's removing the grid out of the wastewater, it's removing the inorganic material, the plastics and all those kind of things. The deficiencies here lack of screening, the filtration, the blowers again are 25-plus years, grip pumps are 25-plus years, and this is an original structure, so there's some repairs that need to be done to the, the concrete walls. The affluent pump station, affluent pumps and valves, pump controls, the boiler, heating ventilation, motor control, those things again are all 25-plus years, and then the variable frequency drives. This is really a key component of the pump station, I mean, of the wastewater plant, because everything comes in by gravity and it's lifted, so this is really a critical functional point in the wastewater plant. The primary clarifiers, the drives, scum troughs, primary sledge pumps, again, the tanks, concrete tanks are okay, the handrails are okay. As you can see, the staff has been good about repainting the steel beams. They've done work on the wiers, the internal collectors, so there's a lot of things that are in very good shape and fine here. The RVCs, the rotating biological contactors, this is where the biological part of the process is done, and the drives have been replaced, but again, this, these units, the covers, the plastic media, the superstructures are again at 25-plus years, and then also the blowers and the electrical components. The secondary clarifiers, the drives and the scum troughs, and the WAS pumps, this is where the secondary clarification piece occurs, and again, you can see there's been painting of the beams, the staff has done significant amount of work in these three structures. Again, there's, there's several things that are in very good shape, one ahead. The effluent filter, that's where the polishing occurs, and one thing that's different about this structure with Bennington is this structure doesn't run 52 weeks out of the year. There's a permit requirement that it only needs to be run in the summer when the flows in the river below a certain point, so in a typical year, it's only run one or two weeks. I'll talk about the alternatives on this a little bit. Everything in here, though, is 25-plus year. It's all the pumps, the bridge, as you can see, the corrosion on the bridge, the control system, the heating ventilation systems. The anabolic digestion, that's where the treatment of the sludge occurs, and especially the volume reduction, and the majority of this is again 25-plus years. The gas pumping, the digester covers themselves, the secondary digester covers, control system, and the electrical systems. The sledge composting facility, this was rebuilt back in 2004, pretty minor from the corrosion. The dust control is an issue, and I'll kind of let Terry, you know, whether he wants to chime in, but that facility isn't currently being operated because of the concerns with the dust. It hasn't been cleaned, but it is taken out of service, and the town is hauling the sludge cake off site and disposing of that in another manner, so. The control building itself, lab furnishings, heating ventilation systems, motor control center, the electrical instrumentation controlled telemetry system, you know, again, this facility, if you go... You know, again, this facility, if you go into the controls, everything in there is 25-plus years old. If you go into a newer plant, anything we've done in the last 10, 12 years, these guys have a computer at their desk. It's got the screens through what we call a program of a logic controller where they can monitor the system, make process changes. Again, this is 25-plus year old technology.
A question for you. You just went through nine slides headline major deficiencies through the nine different parts of the sewer system. Did your report prioritize?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. At the end of this section, if you go into the report, there's three, four tables in there. We basically went through which items we thought needed to be addressed in the next five years, which items need to be addressed in the next five to 10 years and anything that's 10-plus years on, so. This is where now we've taken the deficiencies and we've gone through the different alternatives here to see what the improvements and the upgrades need to be done. And again, the sewer system rehab, the primary focus of this particular study was really on the interceptive sewer. And there's not any structural issues or anything like that that's a concern. The primary objective here is to reduce the flow, okay, the weather conditions. There's a lot of reasons why that's beneficial. It reduces the electricity costs at the wastewater plant, it reduces the chemical usage, it also provides you more capacity to plant. We looked at two types of rehab, chemical grouting and slip lining. The chemical grouting is about a 10- or 12-year fix, a little over $200,000. The slip lining is basically running a brand-new pipe within inside the existing pipe. That's a 50-plus-year fix and that's the more expensive, the higher end of the range. Pump station upgrade alternatives, you've got five. The town again has been very good. They're pretty minor, pretty small. Replacing pump control panels, replacing pumps, again, they've had the ability to do that out of their budget. Bain Street is a concern because as you can see, the structure is in the middle of the road, so there's safety access issues. We've talked about getting that off the road to the side into a lawn area. We looked at two different types of pump station upgrades and the range of cost in those is $172,000 to $192,000 from a construction cost basis. The other thing that they need to do too is we've obviously got a key difficulty in pump station operation during the upgrades. So if we're building something new up at the side, this all has to stay operable during the upgrade. The wastewater treatment facility upgrade alternatives. So now we've looked at the deficiencies, we came up with the priorities. And one of the things the town asked us to do as part of this is that, you know, what are some of the new technologies, what are some other things we can look at, we should be looking at here to address some of the deficiencies. The headworks, there isn't any screening in there, there's grit removal, so basically everything that comes into the plant goes through a grinder, it's grinded, but it continues through the wastewater plant. Pretty commonly now, we put a screen in, so it's pulling that inner unit material out of the full stream. It's taking the plastics out and all those kind of things. So we looked at two or three alternatives. That was honestly eliminated, it wasn't carried ahead because of the pretty significant cost to add that. It's a classified space, it had to go in above ground. The RBCs, we looked at replacement for the shafts and the covers. We did look at other technologies and the decision was made to stay with the RBC technology. You've had that for 25, 30 years. There's several plants in Vermont that still continue to use that, larger than St. Johnsbury, St. Oliven, Brattleboro, Windsor. And the decision in all those cases had been made to stay with that RBC technology. There's a lot of reasons why we wouldn't look at anything different. Again, we have to keep that operable. There isn't any effluent permit requirements in the horizon for you guys that would dictate looking at a different type of technology. So the decision really was made to stay with those and continue with that, those RBCs and the biological treatment side. The filtration, we looked at three alternatives. And if we're going to do anything, it was really to stay with what you had because you only use that only two weeks out of the year. We looked at filter technologies, but it didn't really make sense, really not prudent to spend that amount of money for something that you only use a week or two out of the year. Disinfection, your disinfection system is in very good shape. It was converted from gas to liquid here a few years ago. But ultraviolet disinfection is being used fairly commonly, so we looked at that. And again, it's expensive, it's not cheap to operate, we ruled that out because there really wasn't any driver for the town to go in that direction. Co-generation, one of the things that's commonly done in the anabolic digestion process is taking the methane gases released and using that to generate electricity, either using a microturbine or some type of an engine that's used commonly in some of the bigger wastewater plants. We revisited that unfortunately because the town's wastewater strength is pretty low.
You're just in the way of the camera.
Sorry. We don't generate enough gas so that we wouldn't get any kind of reasonable turnout investment by that. We couldn't justify it or we couldn't, you wouldn't get anything better than a 10 or 10 to 12, so we ruled that out. The control building expansion, we looked at two different sizes of additions on that. And the reason we looked at expanding the control building is that we need to replace the motor control center and some other things in there. And again, whatever we do for upgrades of the plant, we need to keep the existing system operable, so by sequencing that, we really needed to do a building addition. Sewer system rehab, the recommendations there, the manholes, rebuild approximately 24 structures at an estimated construction cost of $50,250. Pipelines, about 8,400 feet of 15-inch to 30-inch pipe at an estimated construction cost of 1.7 million. Again, the slip lining's got a 50-plus-year life versus going the other approach. Available funding sources, the state revolving loan, our capital funds. The really, the consensus with the sewer system rehab is to continue ahead using funds out of your wastewater budget and your capital fund, okay? So the staff is going to continue to knock off these 20 structures and do four or five a year. On the slip lining, that's broken down into many different pipe segments that the town can choose to do, you know, put $100,000 a year of that if you wanted to, that can be phased and it can be done over a period of time, so. It really, the preference here wasn't to roll this into an overall project where something you would vote on and use the state home funds. This is just a few, the yellow sections on here show the recommended areas for the interceptive sewer. The treatment plant upgrade is the biggest part of this. And back to the question about the priorities, is we basically took everything that we felt needed to be done over the next five years. And the reason for that is that's kind of about the timeframe for this type of project. We look at the design permitting, it takes about a year. Construction of projects of this size is about a two-year duration depending what's in here. So best-case scenario, we're looking out roughly to about 2015 or so before we're done. So we're really pushing up against this five-year window. And basically, this was to address everything within this five-year duration. And as you can see over here, the estimated construction cost is about 12.75 million and total project cost is a little over 17 million. So we came up with these recommendations, the way the priorities were done, and we were really directed to kind of take a step back and kind of relook at the project and the recommendations that we had to bring to cost down and really identify those three or four key elements that really needed to be done. Again, looking at the wastewater site plan here, you know, we had recommendations for the headworks, influent pump station, primary clarifiers, the RBCs, secondary clarifiers, the effluent filter, disinfection facility, and then going back over to the sludge. So there weren't too many things in the project that we weren't touching. Obviously, the existing buildings are in good shape. The compost facility generally, again, was rebuilt in 2004 with the watering, so that's going to stay as is. But we're pretty much doing some amount of work, in some cases relatively minor, pretty much every tank, every structure, every majority of buildings on the site. So we went back and basically what we tried to do is we looked at really the more complex items. And by that, what I mean is like we went into the influent pump station, the headworks, we're looking at the influent pumps. And those are hard to do because there's four pumps and it's hard to say, I'm going to replace one pump a year. And as you're replacing the pumps, there's electrical requirements, there's variable frequency drives, need to replace the motor control center, there's heating ventilation. So we looked at the complexity of these various items. And again, the intent here was to address the critical short-term needs. The thing I do want to point out here is, you know, as part of the recommendations here, these other things that were part of the overall project still need to be done. They all will go away, fall off the radar. So as part of this, what we call upgrade-based project, we have influent pump station upgrades, we have replacing three out of the four trains of the rotating biological contactors, we have the anabolic digestion upgrades, we have the control building in there because we've got the motor control center, the electrical, the telemetry and those kind of things. So now if you're looking at the site plan, the work here is really limited to the influent pump station, the rotating biological contactors, the control building, primary and secondary digest is over here, so the scope is at least overall is quite a bit different than the original overall project. This one comes in at an estimated construction cost, again, we're projecting ahead to March 2014 of a little bit over 10 million, the total project cost of about 12.9 million. Again, the difference between those two numbers, we carry a 10% construction contingency. There's other related project costs, legal, et cetera. It also includes the engineering cost for the permitting to put the contract documents together. It also includes the engineering services provided during the mid-construction phase of the project. The primary funding in Vermont for this type of project is what we call a state revolving loan. We're pretty fortunate still compared to other adjacent states. That's a 20-year term, 2% administration fee. The last couple of years, which is a carryover of the stimulus money, is there's also been a loan subsidy. That's varying a little bit by year, but it was two years ago, 12%. What that means, if you borrow $4 million, you know, you owe 80% of that back, so that's equivalent to a grant. That is capped at $4 million a year, so basically with this size of a project, you would give $4 million a year. We've got a project, upgrade project in Essex Junction, that's 15.2 million, and we're able to get that fully funded, so we're getting $4 million in state SRAF a year. There was a small component, something for the bond bank, but the majority of funding is coming from the state. The other option we have up here is the municipal bond bank. They can do a 20-year term, but you can see the interest rate's higher and that's going to be dictated, obviously, when you go out for the bond sale, but it's going to be definitely higher, higher than 3%. So generally for this type of operating project, there isn't any grant money longer, but you know, the SRAF, state SRAF is really the better deal up there, so. Talking of coverage, this is a slide, it's a little hard to read on here. What we're trying to do is kind of present the very far left-hand side, 2014, started construction at 12.9 million. Basically, use what we call the cost index, the projected construction cost. If it isn't starting construction in 2014, the cost goes up about $500,000 a year, call inflationary, whatever you want to call it, so that's the incremental increase if it doesn't get started in 2014, so. In the base project, the recommended bond amount would be 12.9 million. And the current year customers, don't get into a whole lot of detail, but your sewer customers right now, the average rate is about $300 a year. And that's actually very low compared to the statewide average, which is about $450. I don't, I fully appreciate it for a lot of people, the $300 is probably still a lot. But one of the things we've really been stressing with this even more, as more you look at the utility cost, a typical sewer residential user in the town of Bennington pays $300 a year, which is about $25 a month. We're really trying to impress on people, you know, what are the utilities cost by comparison? When you're looking at water, public water, public wastewater, 25 bucks is relatively a good part. I mean, I get my Comcast bill and that's 175 bucks a month. You know, natural gas, this time of year, that's over $200 a month. If you've got a wireless, you know, phone bill, if you've got two or three phones, that's going to be 150 bucks a month, so.
I just feel a little bit duty-bound to make, there is a difference between Comcast, which is a for-profit enterprise, and the Bennington Sewer Department, which is not here to turn a profit, it's here to serve sewer customers.
But one of the things we get to is unfortunately, most municipalities don't build a water sewer on a monthly basis unless you have an electric department. So I think it's important, you know, the problem is people are getting that bill twice a year and again, it's a lot of money now. But I think we need to do a better job in the industry, especially the water sewer, educating people and saying, you know, it's relatively inexpensive compared to many other utilities and it's a necessity where some of these other ones are really somewhat optional, so.
Wayne, question. So the impact on sewer rates, is that your projection that a 12.9 million dollar project would raise the sewer rates $46 per quarter?
Yes, roughly, yeah, $45 to $50 per quarter, so. So this is kind of why, this is really up to the board's discretion, you know, we kind of put a project schedule together and kind of why we're here tonight. And it's purely the board's decision about, I understand there's a lot, many of issues in the town about whether it's even appropriate to go to a bond boat on this project in March of 2013. The study was wrapped up in October and we kind of figured out what could be a tentative potential schedule or timeline here. You know, March 2013 bond boat, basically we'd be into the design permitting, putting the contract documents together, majority of 2013, like to generally get these types of projects up in February, March, you know, so we can get good competitive pricing. And depending on the scope and what's in here, again, you're looking at probably at least an 18-month construction duration. So completion of maybe July 2016 is a one-year warranty period. One of the good news about the state SRAF program with that funding source is that even though the project would be starting construction in 2014, that first loan payment isn't due until roughly 2018 if you're on schedule, so. Or is it, you go to the bond, I'm sorry, you go to the bond bank, you know, once you go to the bond sale, you have to immediately start on that interest payment in that first year, so that gives, you know, gives some flexibility here, so. Another option, which we can pick around two, you know, the board shows and you wanted to wait till November of next year or even March, it's some flexibility, we can still move the project ahead and still try to even on track. Again, the concern is it doesn't get any cheaper and things are approaching 30 years of age. And these are kind of the next steps we've laid out. We want to make sure we catch up on the state priority list for funding for the next project phases. We're here tonight to do the presentation of the select board, talked about maybe starting the engineering in January of next year. And then if you did choose to do a March 2013 bond, you know, there's public outreach and education that really needs to begin early, you know, in January of next year, which is, you know.
Does anybody have any questions? Stuart?
Well, I don't have any questions, no. My only comment would be that I don't think we're prepared to go to a bond boat in March of 2013. I have met with the staff once in very detail to talk about of the priority recommendations that Aldrich and Elroy are coming up with, what are the ones that we think need to go first? And Wayne's already indicated that we think we can segment the sewer line reconstruction and improvements within the annual budget. And I think realistically, we probably are looking at March 2014 to put a project before the voters. What that project is at this point, I couldn't even tell you. And obviously, we have other issues financially that we're facing this year with the, still the question about the FEMA funding. We need to put that and this in the same light and the same microscope and understand what the impacts will be to the town. Wayne is correct, the state funding system is very beneficial because it does allow us not to start paying back until after construction is completed. So if we can, if we can get into that project and we can get into that timeline, I think that's very beneficial to us rather than going to the bond bank. But I'm not prepared to- But I'm not prepared tonight to give you a direction.
The other thing I would like to add is that for us to get from the 17.25 to the 12.900, was to do most of the infrastructure out in the collection system through our annual budget, to upgrade pump stations like we showed at Bank Street out of our annual budget. Right now, you folks may be doing nothing, a couple hundred thousand a year to do slip lining and repairs and that kind of thing. But what we would have to do, because those facilities do need upgrading along with the treatment plant, we've really focused on the 12.9 and spending our money on the treatment process at the treatment facility. So in order to get that $5 million down, we felt that by doing some engineering on our own and with some help from local engineering and overseeing and doing some of those projects aside from local contractors, that not even cut the cost of money cost to do that versus doing it in the overall project, but we can do, you know, a year at a time. So again, in order for us to come from the 17 million to the 12.9, was to do all the pump station work and all the infrastructure work out in the system on an annual basis, trying to fight off what we do and still perform our regular maintenance.
Okay. I mean, I certainly would like to see us get past this FEMA thing first before I make any kind of a decision on what the timeline should be on this.
I pray we step forward. We started this in late 2010, 2011, and Wayne and Stuart and I all thought, whether it's really realistic to try to do something this early on or not. And I said, let's just leave that and let the board make that decision. When we set this up, we had no idea where we might be with FEMA, and some are outstanding that. So again, totally up to the board. We're not really here to push the timeframe, but more, we want to come now and show you what we've done while it's fresh in our mind and give you plenty of time to plan ahead.
Well, I think it's nice to know the information and to, you know, see what we're going to be up against, and to know that you guys can do some of the stuff internally, like the sewer, you know, the, I know you do the, what I want to say? The street sewer things every year. I can't think of the right word.
Flush, ablution, pumps.
No, the manholes.
The manholes, we can do, we can segment the major sewer line alterations, whether it's the slip lining, which is recommended, and it's the direction I would be leaning in as well, even though it's more costly. But if we can, if we can segment that and do that over a period of time, the project gets done, it has a long, long life, and I think it's money well spent. But here again, I'm not sitting here tonight prepared to recommend this is how we go forward.
Oh, I understand, yeah, I understand.
I think we needed to have this discussion. I think the presentation outlines for you what we're facing. And I think that, at least my experience with this board, has been that once you understand what the costs are, you've been ready and willing to direct the staff on how we might get there financially. So we'll be working at that, I think, over the course of the next several months.
Greg?
A couple of questions. You had mentioned in the controlling units and whatnot, the complications of replacing electrical units and things. One thing comes to mind is electronics versus electrical and continuity in a system. One of the things in the last 30 years I've seen in industrial situations is that where you used to be able to buy a piece of equipment, maintain it, run it for 50 years, now there's a computer attached to it that is outdated in five years. And, you know, it makes those improvements a lot more rapid. And also, if you have a line of them and they don't match from year to year, there can be complications. Is there a concern in that, or is...
I don't think what we're doing here, Greg, is too much of that. I think of what we've got left in here. I think electrically, the big thing we're talking about is if you go into a control building, one, we're calling it a control center, you know, it's got some starters and breakers. That's a big part of what's been controlled. But from the instrumentation piece, you know, and this is again, discussion versus scope, again, most of the plants nowadays have a laptop and screens, and they can monitor all the different processes from the control building, they can even file remotely from home on weekends and E2. That's kind of more the standard of the industry. And, you know, you're right, I mean, the computers, you know, the software probably doesn't change a whole lot, but it's six or seven years, and you require a computer, I mean, a software update or something like that. You know, the technology that continues to change, the variable frequency drives at Georgetown, the influent pumps, you know, probably 15-plus years old, but again, that technology's gotten a lot better, it's less expensive, more reliable. So, but not too much off the top of my head I can think of as part of what's still in the project that would be directly impacted by that.
Thank you. Good presentation, thank you.
Jason, any comments or questions?
A couple of financial questions, really, that I would direct to Stu at the appropriate time, and tonight's not the appropriate time. My question would be, when we look at enterprise fund cash flow and depreciation question that this board went round and round on, which we don't need to get back into tonight, but there is an excess of cash flow at the end of the year that flows into depreciation on top of what this board, the Texas Water and Sewer Board, already puts into infrastructure improvements. I'd like to have a base idea of what that, whether it's budgetary or excess cash applied to depreciation, which should be building up in accounts by this year, how much that makes available, and how much of this work we could do out of that cash flow, which is, I think, down the line of what you were saying anyway, of an analysis, or maybe Terry was saying that, in terms of what we could do right out of the budget without having to bond for. The second question I would have that's financially related is, off the top of my head, I know you gave us a few weeks ago, maybe it's a few months ago, a list of the outstanding bonds. I don't have that with me tonight, but I'd want to know what, if any, bonds we have remaining on the current infrastructure we have out there. If we're already in a posture that we're looking to rebond, to do major work, and we haven't outlived the life of those original bonds, I think that raises a whole new set of questions in terms of how we finance our sewer infrastructure.
I can tell you that there are no outstanding sewer bonds. The sewer fund is bond-free. Those bonds have been completely paid off. The existing bonds from the enterprise fund perspective are all in the water fund at the current time.
I will just say this, just really directed more at the five other members here tonight. The proposal just about doubles voters' sewer bills. I think that's duly noted, that we have a lower-than-average rate statewide, I shouldn't say the voters, the users, but when we're raising it 46, when we're hearing tonight, $46 per quarter, my cynical side says it's going to be more than $46 a quarter. I think we're below 30s for the standard rate right now, aren't we? You just paid the bill, I should know that, but I think it's...
Frankly, I don't have it off the top of my head, Jason.
It's about 25 on the month right now for a state, yeah, for kind of an average alarm.
In Bennington?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a, I would just say, that's a radical increase, and if there's a way to spread this out over time, I think it's something this board ought to very seriously consider.
Well, I think, don't forget, we still have one more rate hike.
Actually, in the sewer fund, I think we have two more years of, I think we're looking at, like currently, around 11% in the sewer fund. The water fund has reached its level, and I think next year we're projecting only a 3% increase to deal with depreciation issues. So the sewer fund...
Sure, it's two more years of sewer increases like that? That seems, we've had...
I know it's at least one.
Yeah.
I think we're at our 13th year right now.
I thought we were at year three, right?
It might even be the fourth, because I think we thought we would be able to start putting money aside above the, on our depreciation amount last year, and actually it happened this year. Any water, I think, is another year out.
My recollection is, is once we got to that point, we were backing off the big, big.
Well, yes, we are back, that's the plan.
Which would be this July.
Right. So, what Terry says, I think, is correct, and that may mean that when we face our next water and sewer fund budget discussion in May, we'll have a very good understanding of the fact that that depreciation is either paid in full or budgeted in full, and now we're looking at real projects. Of course, as soon as you start to upgrade your facilities and spend capital dollars, you start that depreciation issue.
Right, but if what Terry said is correct, that we're now at the, I'm not getting back into that depreciation discussion again tonight, but if we're at the point where we've now gotten to that point, we shouldn't be looking at another 11, 12%.
I agree, I agree. I thought there was another year or two left, but I may be wrong.
I think there's one more year left.
I may be wrong.
But I could be wrong, too. Okay. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. And I'm sure you'll be hearing from us. Next item on the agenda is Tour of the Dragons. Thank you for your patience.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
Listening to our water and sewer, I'm here.
Greetings, everybody. I wanted to, my name for those at home, Jim Marshall with the Tour of the Dragons. Thank you for having me here tonight. I wanted to do two things tonight. One is to do, to provide a quick review of the 2012 event, and then discuss with you the 2013 event. In short, the 2012 Tour of the Dragons was a resounding success. I would like to recognize everyone involved, local residents, area businesses, key agencies, local municipalities, for helping to make an important event great. We sincerely appreciate all the help that we received along the way. From our post-rose event survey, which went out to the 400 participants, we received very positive responses across the board. Understood that 90% of the participants are from out of state. They came to love the area, loved the town of Bennington, the shards of Vermont. These received and commented that they had very warm reception from the businesses and the residences across the board, enjoyed great. The restaurants find lodging, and they found other variety of services easily accessible. The racers are very, very pleased with the format of the Tour of the Dragons. It's a very compressed format, three races in two days, high volume, but it meets the needs of the serious amateur and the professional racer early in the season. They like the courses very much, and the South Screen Time Trial Course, which is on Saturdays, we quoted as the best time trial course in North America. I lucked out on that, couldn't have designed it, but it's the closest thing to the challenging courses in Europe that they find, that the professionals find when they're racing over there. The Road Race Course, which starts and finishes in Manchester after traversing most of the shards of Vermont, is, as one person said, epic. The event is also strategically scheduled for the normally slow period between the winter ski season and the summer tour season, so it's a nice shot in the arm economically for an area during those normally low period. And the Tour of the Dragons has grown in popularity and demand. It's now the third-largest stage race in New England. Very quickly, 400 racers represented about 1,500 visitors to the area. 91% stayed overnight for the event, 43% stayed for two nights for the event. A very interesting metric is that 23% of the competitors came early, came one or two or three weeks early to recon the courses, and a high majority, 77% of those people, also stayed overnight. So in total, when you add up that influx into the area, that represented 625 room nights into hotels, and of course, along with that, restaurants and gift items, et cetera. 79% of the participants plan on returning to the area for a non-racing vacation, and it kind of shows the long-term ripple effect that the event has to the area. The event collect competitors was about $11,000. Most of that is spent back right in the town, or right in the area. The race organization spent about $15,000 on local services, from porta potties to town services. And the race organization also paid out $1,800 to local nonprofit organizations that helped support the event. It was a nice give-back to a number of nonprofit organizations within the area. Now, given with all the positive feedback, we recognize that not all the businesses, especially in the downtown area, realize the immediate benefit from the event, although the long-term benefits are irrefutable. The design and nature of the 2012 downtown race course may, have made it difficult for regular businesses to see the regular foot traffic, and we acknowledge their concern. Our goal is to find the right balance for the community as a whole, host a quality event, bring visitors to the area, and minimize the impact on downtown businesses. To accomplish this goal, a new course is designed for 2013. The downtown Criterium would be replaced with a circuit race outside of the downtown area, and the focus is on the course, is to bring it into low-density residential roads not far from downtown, but with minimal impact to downtown businesses. So the circuit race is a 16-mile loop. It would start nominally at the Mount Anthony Middle School, goes north on East Road, turns left on Houghton Road and heads west, reaches out to Route 7A, and then turns north through Shasbury and on up onto Airport Road, Sidermore Road, and Maple Hill Roads before intersecting with East Road and coming back to the south. Roughly 50% of the course is on Shasbury's backroads. Racers would do multiple laps of the circuit before finishing at Dees Marketplace in Delhi on East Road. In essence, it's a short version of the very successful 70-mile road race, which starts and finishes in Manchester. In contrast to the downtown Criterium run in Bennington last year, the circuit race roads are open to regular traffic, so there's no closing down the roads at all. Three waves, a morning, midday, and afternoon groups would go out. Each group has four categories in it. Those categories are separated by 10-minute intervals. To give you an idea, it would take the racers less than 10 minutes to go from Houghton Road to Airport Road on Route 7A. So essentially, when one group is turning off on the Airport Road, another group hasn't even reached Route 7A yet. So very good spacing all the way around the course. And USA Cycling Association has proven it's a very effective way of managing race courses like this on open roads. Shasbury Select Board has unanimously approved the use of the roads in their township, and I've already met with many of the businesses along the route to give them a preliminary indication of the race, the timing, and have received very positive feedback across the board. We also put out variable, we call message signs, alerting the public to the fact that the race is going to be held in the, on those roads on Saturday May 4th, and advanced notices will be specifically displayed at the town transfer station, understanding that's a busy road, busy area on a Saturday. Regular announcements and updates will be made through media channels locally. In summary... So we're looking forward to an even better Tour of the Dragons for 2013. We would keep the same time trials as we've run the last two years on Saturday concurrent with the new circuit race, if approved, by the way. with the new circuit race, if approved, by your own, and to make this an improved Tour of the Dragons for the town, for the residents, for the community, for the businesses as a whole. We're asking for the town's consent for the event to take place on the town roads. The date is Saturday, May 4th. It would include the new circuit race and the South Stream Time Trial Race. Thank you very much for your time and support. Do you have any questions?
Any board members have any questions?
Joan, I've had a look at this before, and I've heard some about it. It seems to address all the issues that we had downtown. John Shanahan was the one who brought them to my attention this year tonight. Would you agree with that, John? That the moving it up to East Road addresses the issues we had with traffic and whatnot downtown, but is still a pretty good event for downtown for the Friday and--
Specifically, even when it was downtown, the issues it caused, the merchants still realizing the worth of it, or the role that it's not only addressing those issues, but staying in that area.
Yeah, I think it's a nice adjustment. I've heard a lot of great feedback on the event, so, good to see. I like the idea that the sides came together, got a positive result from what were issues last year, and came up with a secondary plan. Do you have any issues, Stuart?
No, we've already met with Jim, and that is our highway and public works and police. There'll be a lot less that we have to do to handle both of these races than we did with the downtown Criterium. So it's going to reduce the cost to the bicycling folks, because they actually paid for the police and highway help, but it's also going to put less pressure on our staff to get out there and to handle it. So we're pretty happy with the changes, and I think we're ready for this event to take place.
Okay. I mean, I think it's a nice, it's nice that everybody could work together and find a solution for this. So you'll still do the South Stream Loop in the morning?
Yes.
And then this other race will, well, it's going to start, what, late morning? You'll have three?
Yeah, they actually overlap, just as they did last year.
Oh, okay.
All right. So some racers will race on the time trial course in the morning, others will race on the circuit race, and then they'll flip-flop, so they'll do their second race of the day in the alternate time span.
Okay. So do we need a motion?
Yes, because we're allowing them to utilize our roadways for this purpose.
Okay.
So move. I'll second.
Okay. Does anybody else have any discussion, questions? Okay. All those in favor? No, it's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your support.
Still, I have one of these for Joe, too. Pass that down. Next item on the Agenda's Managers Report.
I only have one action item, and that's really for us to set some dates. First, we have to consider the second meeting in December of this month, would normally fall on the 24th. I don't think we want to get together on Christmas Eve, although we all know and like--
At least one sure.
And probably two.
So I'm suggesting that we meet on Monday, the 17th, at 5:30 PM at the Town Office Conference Room, really to do just warrants and other business.
That's funny.
To make that a very quick meeting for the holidays. And then I enclosed a map, a calendar of January. Normally, we meet on the Saturdays in January, but I leave that to you folks. The first Saturday in January is the 5th. We have to have the budget wrapped up and the warning prepared for our meeting on the 28th, because it has to be in the paper and warned by the end of that week. I think it's February 3rd is the final deadline, which is, I think, the Sunday, for Sunday in February. So if we look at those four Saturdays, it does, I think, within reason, gives us four days to work. If you want to pick some other days once we get started, obviously, the staff and I will be readily available for you during that timeframe.
So do we want to start early? Joe and I talked about it, and we thought we'd schedule three with definitely two meetings, and then if we needed the third Saturday, we'd have it.
We've always had a third meeting. I think the board should probably count that a third meeting. I was going to suggest, last year, I think we started meeting at eight instead of nine, and that seemed to work out better.
I would ask for 9:00 AM start as well.
Killing.
How long do the meetings generally last?
We usually, we're out by noon time.
Three hours.
I mean, a three-hour meeting is typical.
You'll still be serving hot dogs at noon time.
So the 5th, 12th, and the 19th?
Yeah.
That work for everybody? Okay.
Very good. We'll set that up and make sure they get properly warned. And that's all I have.
Okay. Jason, any other business tonight?
Yes. First, I'd like a brief executive session for a legal issue that isn't on the agenda, but--
Or in the packet.
Or in the packet.
Okay.
Harkening back 90 minutes in the past when we were talking about parking and the issue of striping streets. I've been meaning to raise the issue of Elm Street for some time. Who striped Elm Street between South--
You got it. Is he drinking?
Did he do that, or didn't?
It's interesting.
That is the least straight striped line in the state of Vermont, I guarantee.
Every two years, the state of Vermont stripes all Class II highways throughout the state. Now, it obviously rotates from town to town. We were prepared to stripe all of our Class II roads because we felt they needed it. Much to our delight, the state, at the very end of the year, decided they had sufficient crews and material available. They came in and striped our Class II roadway, so the state of, the contractor for the state did Elm Street.
I would suggest that in people's travels over the next few days before there's snow cover or something, turn at the intersection across from Friendly's and drive west towards the Elks, and pay particular attention to the portion of the road in between the post office and Love Cody and Company, because it looks like a bone. I mean, it's, I've been noticing it for months, and what it does is, and it really--
It's confusing.
Led, you know, the discussion tonight accentuates the point. If you follow the line, you drive into parked cars.
Right, yeah.
You have to cross the center line as it's striped to stay in the flow of traffic and avoid parking. It's awful, and I do think that needs to be looked at. Now, the second thing, also regarding striped streets, would be Hillside Avenue, because if in fact the town has liability for painting parking spaces that force one to cross the center line, that street would cause a bicycle to cross the center line, the way we park, the way we stripe those streets. And if there is in fact an articulable liability to the town for striping parking spaces as such, we need to redo that sooner rather than later.
Well, I think Hillside Street is really problematic, and that stems from when we--
It never was until we striped parking the way we did.
It never was until we rebuilt it. And we actually, and I can't tell you why it happened, but we actually narrowed the traveled portion of that roadway when we shouldn't have, and that has created the problem for us. For those members who weren't here, we started looking at Hillside as making it one-way only. Decided at the end to drop that idea and go ahead with a project that would allow two lanes with parking on both sides, and for whatever reason, it got, it was made too narrow during the project. And once we went up and striped it after the fact, it really exacerbates the problem. And I agree with you, Jason. I think we need to take a hard look at that, about where we allow parking and where we don't allow parking, and how we stripe that road to make it more safe. Because you can't get two vehicles passed when there are cars parked on both sides that road.
And it even gets narrower once you get to the top of that little hill.
That's, that's where it was the widest.
Well, not only that, to the crest of that hill, if you are in the flow of traffic, the first parking spot to the right, you'd go right into the trunk of the car parked in that space if you weren't paying attention.
I agree. I do agree.
All right. That's all.
On the same topic of striping, it's been brought to my attention on, not Willem's, Dermody Road, that the striping that Miriam Silver had brought up to you, it's been addressed, thank you very much. But historically, his Dermody Road had a stripe running down the middle of it because Mrs. Silver and several other older drivers have expressed concern that it's difficult for them to find the opening to their own property, whereas in the past, I'm not sure, I'm asking you if there was either a yellow or a white stripe that delineated properties, you know, the opening of driveways.
Normally, in the rural areas, the only time you break the double, the yellow, is at the intersection with a roadway, not at particular driveways. So one of the problems now with striping roadways is that the paint no longer contains some of the materials that it used to contain, which made it last longer. So we find ourselves having to stripe roads more often than we would like normally. So every year, we're out there, in that particular case, the yellow line would, double yellow would run down the length of the roadway. There'd be no breaks. This year, we added what we call the fog line, which is the white line on the shoulder, because many times when you're driving, and especially in inclement weather, you really can't necessarily see where the center of the road is, but that white line lasts longer because it's less traveled, and it helps guide you. So normally, those would not be broken for driveways. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else, Jason?
Thank you.
Greg?
That was my only question.
Okay. Yeah, this memorandum, Stu, about the email address, do we need to do something with that, Mike?
No, that's just for your information. It's part of the upgrade of the system. It'll allow people to email the select board. That email will actually come to my desk and allow me to distribute it directly to you folks, or either in the packet, or turn it around and send it out to you in a mass mail.
I do have a comment.
Yes.
Why wouldn't it just be forwarded automatically to the select board members? It's a email presumably sent by a member of the public to the select. It would seem to me that it would make sense that anything hitting that basket would go to seven select board members and the town manager. To your comment, Sharon, that we're not privy or privileged to have all those emails, we are privileged to have those emails, and we are the--
But we are.
These are, well, I know, but your comment earlier today said we're not privileged to all those emails, and I thought that was probably incorrect.
I think I meant that we don't necessarily receive all of the emails.
Well, my point is, is if it's being sent to selectboard@benningtonvermont.org, seven select board members ought to get, not, Stu wouldn't do it, but there might be a break of 12 to 14 days in some cases before we would then see those emails.
If it's your, yeah, if it's your desire to have it just turned around right out--
I just think if somebody's--
I mean, that's fine with me.
That was going to be my suggestion.
Joe Bennington on County Street says, hey, I want to send the select board something. The technology is clearly there for that email to be sent to the seven select board members, so seven members can decide, do they want to call the person who sent it? Would they like to respond to it? It gets it in front of select board, you know, was sent to the select board, it gets it to the select--
That's fair.
Can do.
I do.
That's all I got.
Chris?
Actually, no, I wanted to mention that, too, but--
Okay. Justin?
We have an update here from Mike Carrington, Large Loan Charge Off. If we're going to go on executive session, I have a couple of specific questions that I'd like to ask. So I'd like to, I'll bring that up in there as well.
Okay. Anything?
I'm good.
Okay. I just want to mention, Joe and I and Jim actually were at the Christmas tree lighting last Friday. The weather was not the best, but it was a very nice ceremony. The tree looks nice, and unfortunately, it was kind of a low turnout because of the weather, I think. But I think it'll be good. I think the veterans that were there appreciated it, and it was very nice.
Oh, I do have something that you remind me on that. Same night, open house, I mean, opening night at Old Castle, they had a full house.
Oh, the Old Castle.
It was great. It was a really nice, high-energy crowd, and--
Good.
Everything went swimmingly with a lovely play. So congratulations to them.
Yes. Okay. Then I need to go into executive session briefly, so I will entertain a motion.
Come on.
Go to executive session.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay.